Let's get at it. Third, 2021 City Commission Meeting. Before we begin, we're going to have some explanation on the format of our meetings from Casey.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Casey Toomey, Assistant City Manager.
And I want to share some housekeeping items for this meeting. The meeting is being broadcast and recorded on the City of Lawrence YouTube channel. The public chat function for this meeting has been disabled. All chats will go directly to me. When you're not participating in the meeting, please mute your microphone. When you are participating in the meeting, please keep your video on. When you're not participating in the meeting and you turn your video off, you will still be able to hear the meeting. You can turn your video back on when you're not part of it, back on when you are participating. By turning your video off, it allows active meeting participants to be seen on the screen. If you have any trouble, please send me a chat. The city reserves the right to mute microphones and or turn off video to minimize distractions. Please remember to state your name when you speak for the benefit of those listening remotely. And I'll now turn the meeting back over to our Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Casey. And next we'll hear from our City Clerk, Sherri Redeman, to explain a little bit about public comment.
Thank you. So when public comment is sought on an item, the Vice Mayor will first call on those participating in person. Individuals wishing to provide public comment should approach the podium following social distancing and safety protocols. Participants who are required to or choose to wear a mask may remove their mask while making remarks at the podium. Please state your name before speaking and comments will be limited to three minutes. The Vice Mayor will then call on those participating virtually. Individuals providing public comment via Zoom should use the raise hand function to indicate they wish to speak. The raise hand function may appear in different places on your Zoom menu, depending on the device you are using and which version of Zoom you have. Individuals will be called upon by name in the order they appear on the meeting host screen. When you are called on, please unmute and state your name. Again, comments will be limited to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. We hadn't been doing roll call, but do you need us to, Sherri?
Uh, no.
Okay. Let's move ahead then just to approve the agenda. The City Commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during a meeting. Do you have any motions or second? Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Passes four to zero. Recognition proclamations. We do have one today. So this is my first one, everyone. I'm a little nervous, but here we go. This is for 811.
Is there anyone to speak on?
Huh?
Is there anyone here to speak on it?
Oh, do they speak first? Sherri, do we have anyone who showed up?
I'm not aware of Vice Mayor. Is there anyone to speak?
Oh, no, I didn't see him. Yeah. Would you like to make a statement?
Usually do it before.
Okay. Go ahead and do it before.
My name is Mario Grandias. I'm Operations Manager at Black Hills Energy. On behalf of 170,000 customers we serve, we sincerely thank you for highlighting the critical importance of safe digging. 811 Day is an important observation that we take very seriously. We have a culture in Kansas that we roll up our sleeves and get the job done. Sometimes that pioneer spirit makes us forget the real things in the world as far as anytime you put a fence post in, sprinkler system repair, or any kind of time that you're going to shovel into the ground, 811 should be called. By not calling it, you do cause that real risk to be facing fines, damages to infrastructures, braven worse something could get hurt. Our people live and work and engage in our communities. We're neighbors, volunteers, maybe even a soccer coach. And I can tell you nothing more than we want our town to be safe. In conclusion, we sincerely thank you for highlighting the importance of 811.
Thank you very much for being here and and being focused on our safety in our community. Thank you. All right. So proclamation. Whereas thousands of times each year, the underground infrastructure in Kansas is damaged by those who failed to contact 811 to have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in service interruption, environmental damage, and threats to the public safety. And whereas in 2005, the Federal Communications Commission designated 811 to provide contractors and homeowners with a simple number to contact utility operators to request the location of underground lines at the intended dig site. And whereas Kansas 811 provides one point of contact available by phone and online to help reduce damages to underground facilities, thereby reducing the loss of service to the public and loss of time and money to contractors, utilities, and taxpayers. And whereas Black Hills Energy maintains its commitment to educate the public about safe digging practices and encourage compliance with local and state's safe digging rules and regulations. And whereas damage prevention is a shared responsibility. By using safe digging practices, city contractors and homeowners can save time, money, and help keep Kansas infrastructure safe and connected. Now therefore, I, Courtney R. Shipley, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, sorry, Vice Mayor, do hereby proclaim August 11th, 2021 as 811 Day. And to encourage everyone to call 811 before they dig. It's safe, it's free, and it's the law. Now, if we can move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed below on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Members of the public wishing to speak to an item that has been pulled off the consent agenda will be limited to three minutes for comments. Are there any commissioners who would like pull items from consent? Seeing none, Sherri, do you see anyone in the public or online who wants to pull something from the consent?
Is there anyone that would like an item pulled off of the consent that's here in the chambers? And if there's anyone participating via Zoom that has an item on consent they'd like pulled, please raise your hand. Looks like there's no items to pull, Vice Mayor.
All right, thank you, Sherri. Being that's the case, are there any motions?
I'd move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a first and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed, four to zero. Let's just clip along. How about public comment? The public is allowed to speak to any items or issues except those scheduled on the consent agenda or regular agenda portions of the agenda. As a general practice, the commission will not discuss, debate these items, nor will the commission take decisions on items presented during this time. Rather, they will refer the item to staff for follow-up. If necessary, individuals should address all comments, questions to the commission. Each person will be limited to three minutes. I do see someone in the public who would like to comment.
Hi there. My name's Rob Farha, F A R H A. I'm a property owner throughout the Oriad neighborhood. I want to bring that I don't have time to go to the computer and email y'all, so I just thought I'd pop down here. It's a very hectic week. But I have an issue with the water department's policy. And it seems to me the policy stating that you need a lease from my tenant to turn the water on. I'd like to get this conversation started with Ms. Wheeler and Jeremy Wilmouth. That lease is a private contract. It's we spend a lot of money with attorneys for these leases. The city has, in my opinion, has no right to see the lease. I have signed off a thing to do it. Today, what happened is, to me, they're cherry picking concrete houses. I'm involved in a lot of concrete houses. I have one, they can see right online, it's licensed, everything, five bedroom, but I only gave her one name on the lease. And I'll admit, I was very curt with Lori Riddner, the supervisor. What's to say I have five separate leases? The one girl that wants it, she wants the water. To me, there's if I have five leases, one lease or whatever. It's in my opinion, there's no right, it's a private contract. They do not need to see if who else is on there. Evergy doesn't do it, Black Hills doesn't do it. I get the excuse, this is, you know, because of city water, it's our tax dollars if they don't pay. Their systems in place, you have their social security number, you have everything to shut it off if they don't pay. Again, it's a private contract. So what I've done in the past, I've blacked out my my rental rates, blacked everything out, and it's been working, give them the front page and last page. Now, on this one, just about an hour ago, she won't turn on unless she sees all the names. My opinion, that's wrong. You can't deny to, you can't deny someone utility. So I'm here to get this conversation started with Ms. Wheeler or one of the other attorneys and Jeremy. Because to me, it's only happening on concrete houses. I can leave, I don't want to leave my number while we're on TV, but I'll leave the sample form with my name and number. There's nothing to sign up here on. So hopefully, we can, something quickly. We're moving a bunch of people in this Saturday. I've already been down here five times with copies of leases. I mean, I have rentals that are outside the Oriad that are single family. And I've never been asked for a copy of the lease. So that tells me they're cherry picking this type of property. Any questions for me?
No, thank you for speaking. Brandon, can I leave that with you? Is that the best thing? Okay. Sherri, is there anyone else in the in the public here who would like to make general public comment on something that's not on the agenda? Yes, of course, please.
Thank you. How nice to have everybody in person. It's really, really very appreciated. The, as I was looking at just agenda items, it struck me a couple of times that the item reports always have a fiscal impact on them. And as just a resident of Lawrence, you know, you five, thinkled I excluded because he's not here, are my only opportunity to really be able to address the city as far as a controlling method other than just talking to you. And I view you, and I think you should view yourselves as the representatives of the residents of Lawrence as opposed to the purported executives of the city. What I'm getting at is the fiscal impacts are only and ever in discussion of the impact to the revenue of the city with no discussion or reference to what it does to the residents. So as we are thinking of terms of affordable housing, it seems really painfully obvious that you should be asking for the fiscal impact to be on how all of these things are affecting the residents of Lawrence. Seems pretty straightforward as all of our representatives and the only power we have over the city. I expect that of you. And I'm hoping that that you'll be viewing it from a slightly different perspective. So respectfully, thank you.
Oh, could you let us know your name?
I'm Chris Berger.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who wants to speak now? Is there anyone online, Sherri?
If there's anyone on Zoom who has general public comment, please raise your hand.
Okay. Chris Flowers.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers, and I just have an idea. When it comes to the budget and how we're going to be giving out, well, suppose, well, considering giving out raises, that our current budget, like in the long run, won't be able to support unless our tax revenues go up. I was just thinking, what if, like, each year, we, instead of just giving out the raises, we give it out in the form of bonuses that's tied to tax revenue? So that way, we could be sure not to go into the red. Like, if our tax revenue isn't high enough, the they don't get the bonus. But if it is high enough, they they get the bonus. And I don't know, it just, because here's my thing, I've just been thinking, because I've been running, that if I, in the future, I am on the on the commission, this is, I'm, I could potentially be screwed if if in a few years from now, the budget comes up and we're in the red, and then I have to be making the decision between raising taxes or cutting services. I would just rather have it where we're not making it a situation where there could potentially be red in the in the future for the a future commission to be having to deal with the problem. So I just hope you guys are thinking of alternatives to going into the red, like the potential going into the red in the future. So just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom or at home that has some public comment?
There's no other public comment, Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry, did you say that you don't see anything?
Yeah, I don't see. Did you see some?
All right. There is some communications I noted on here, so people at home would like to read that. That should be available online. So I think now we can move on to our regular agenda items. Regular agenda item number one, receive the 2020 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Audit Findings from RSM.
Good evening, Jeremy Wilmouth, Finance Director. I'm going to get us started and then I'll throw it over to Kristen Hughes, who's here from RSM to discuss the audit. The city is required to conduct an annual independent audit of its financial statements every year. The city has utilized RSM to perform the audit for the past three audits. And for the fiscal year 2020 audit we're discussing tonight, the city received an unqualified opinion, which is the highest opinion you can receive in an audit. This evening. Share my screen here. This evening, we're going to be presenting the city's annual comprehensive financial report, have a discussion with the auditors, and then discuss a few highlights from the report. These first couple of slides, I'm not really going to go over. They're more just for the public's information of where they can find certain information about the audit and the financial statements within the annual comprehensive financial report. These are specific to the governmental funds, and these are specific to the business-type activity funds. And with that, I will turn it over to Kristen Hughes, a managing partner with RSM.
Good evening, everyone. Just confirming you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you to Jeremy for the introduction, and thank you for letting me join you all this evening. As Jeremy noted, I'm going to go through some of the audit findings, I, just audit results at the conclusion of our audit process as the auditing standards do require of us. Just to kind of piggyback off of what Jeremy started with, and I think he's going to go through a few items in what is referred to as the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report or the Audit of Financial Statements. As you're aware, it is a summarizing some of the key points. So just to emphasize a couple of those, as he noted, the purpose of a financial statement audit is for the audit firm to give an opinion on the financial statements, meaning we opine on whether they are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles as required. As he noted, we did issue the unqualified or unmodified opinion. Those are similar terminology. That's the formal term used by the AICPA, often referred to as the clean opinion. So to echo what he noted, that is the highest opinion that can be issued, that the financial statements are in accordance with GAAP as required. To summarize a couple of those areas in the financials, because again, it is it is a large document. I think, as he noted, management's discussion analysis, you will see that at the front of the document. We, I usually like to point you there. That is a narrative that management provides that tries to go through and highlight really areas specifically in 2020 that were significantly, maybe variances from 2019, and just offering up explanations as to why. Early in the financials, you'll have your statement of net position and statement of activities. And just to clarify, so that's going to be the city collectively. As you know, you you budget and you account for individual funds. So those two statements are the aggregate impact. They combine all of those governmental funds and enterprise funds that are tracked separately in the financials as well. So those two pages do give a perspective of the city as a whole. And then, as he noted as well, and on following those, you have individual financial statements are presented for all of the city's funds. At the front of the document is what's called the major funds. By definition, they they have a specific definition by the GASB, but really, they usually represent the city's most significant funds. There is a quantitative criteria. So there at the front of the report, you will see those significant funds, certainly going to include the city's general or operating fund, enterprise funds, et cetera. So just to make you aware, again, every fund that is tracked by the city has individual balance sheet and income statements included in those in those financials. The nodes, those go through more detailed information, again, meeting disclosure requirements that GAAP and GASB provide that have to be followed. But it's it's more detailed information in areas such as passion investments, debt, pension plans participating in, capital assets, et cetera. In the back is the statistical section. I usually mention this, it's at the conclusion, it is an unaudited section, because you'll see there's a lot of, it goes through a variety of topics. It's a financial recap, but it also includes demographic information about the city, operational stats. But I do like to point it out, just because it is, it's an area of the financials that most of the schedules do require a 10-year history. So sometimes it's beneficial because you can see trends. While the audited financials are just a single-year presentation as required, they're going to be a 2020 transactions alone. That unaudited area is at least a 10-year history, so you can see movement in certain revenue collections, outstanding debt, et cetera. So the other couple of documents that are issued as part of the audit, there is the standalone compliance report. So to summarize the content in there, you know, as a reminder, the purpose of a financial statement audit is not to give an opinion on internal controls. And you will see that summarized in those letters. So the purpose of a financial statement audit is to give the opinion on the financials. However, we do take into considerations controls as we're executing the financial statement audit. Standards do require that if we become aware of any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies as a part of the audit, that those are to be communicated to you. In the 2020 compliance report, you will see there was one material weakness reported. You can read through the description, but in summary for you, it's it's a deficiency related to audit adjustments identified during the process. So again, as as we go through and perform our testing, adjustments are were identified that were considered quantitative and qualitatively significant to the financials. Those have been reflected in the financials, so there are adjustments that are booked by management and reflected in that final audit product. But that was reported as a material weakness, excuse me, simply because those come up as the audit. For some perspective for you, that is the only material weakness in the 2020 compliance report. You know, again, I'm presenting on the current year results, but again, just for some perspective, I believe the 2019 report included four or five material weaknesses and significant deficiencies. And I believe 2018 included three or four. So again, perspective, you know, that that does display management's efforts towards remediating those controls. So in 2020, they had either completely corrected them, or some of them may have just been simply downgraded to what we call a controlled deficiency. So as a reminder, auditing standards, we give, there are three levels of deficiency. The highest is going to be material weakness, again, significant deficiency. The highest is going to be material weakness, again, significant deficiency, and then that lowest level is controlled deficiency. So I know there was at least one where the, the city had, had addressed by far the large majority of it, so it was downgraded to a controlled deficiency this year. The compliance report, as I noted, that was the only material weakness. So as a part of our financial statement audit, because the city does receive and expend more than $750,000 of federal grant expenditures, the city is required to have what's called a single audit each year, which is having the financial statement auditor also specifically do work and issue a compliance report on your, on your grant activity. So there were no material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or instances of non-compliance as it relates specifically to the compliance audit. The city expended, excuse me, almost $12 million in grant expenditures this year. We audit what's referred to as major programs, so we, we do not audit 100% of the grant activity, similar to the financial statement audit. It's done on a sample basis, excuse me. There were three major programs that were selected for testing this year, though. It included the CARES funds that the city expended, the airport improvement program, and the CBG program. So just for perspective, those, excuse me, I've been battling a cold the last week. Apologies, those were the three major programs that we tested this year. So again, no deficiencies or compliance items included. The last document is part of the audit, is those required audit communications. So the standards say there are certain topics that we are required to communicate back to you at the conclusion of the audit. The first few pages of that, just go through a reminder of the responsibilities we have. So again, a reference to those standards that we're following. It also serves as a reminder for the responsibilities that management has over the accuracy of the financials, as well as the information provided as we perform our testing. As part of those disclosures, we also like to highlight if there were any new accounting standards that were adopted this year. We like to highlight those, just in the event that there's anything new or different in this year's audit report compared to what you might have seen in the prior year. The city did adopt two new standards, no significant impact, I would say, this year. One was just adding a couple of required disclosures as it relates to debt, but no significant changes this year that changed how anything was really accounted for. Included in the document, as I mentioned, you're provided with a copy of the audit adjustments that I mentioned earlier in that deficiency. So you can see the audit adjustments that were posted or proposed by the audit firm during the audit that management agreed and approved and posted in the financials. You'll also see a summary of what we call those uncorrected misstatements. So as a reminder, those are items that come up during the audit, but they're immaterial in nature. So management determines, due to their immateriality, they will not be reflected in the financials. We conclude that that, we agree that that conclusion is reasonable, again, due to the immateriality in comparison to the financials as a whole. So instead, they're summarized in this document, and you will see those as well. Last couple of items in the, in the packet are, you're just provided with written communications between the firm and management. So that's going to include that management representation letter that is signed at the conclusion of the audit. Again, just confirming that the financials are accurate, to the best of the knowledge, obviously, of those who were involved in preparing them, as well as, again, that information we were provided with during the course of our audit. Last item, and I apologize, I meant to mention this as I went through the report. The city has historically received the certificate of excellence issued by the GFOA. So as a reminder, that program, the city submits its, its reports. The certificate is based on reporting criteria they have, so they have a specific checklist. And reviewers in that program go through and conclude on whether or not the city has included all required disclosures in their financials. If you meet a certain number of criteria within that checklist, you are awarded the certificate. So you will see in this year's report, the city was awarded that certificate for the 2019 report. And then they obviously issued the certificate a few months later, but you will see that certificate included for the prior year financial statements. So I'm gonna go ahead and pause there, and I'm either happy to let Jeremy continue with the presentation or audit, we can get through those now. I'm, I'm fine with either.
Are there any questions now?
Yeah, actually, I'd like to just weigh in for a minute. Kristen, I just want to ask a few questions. The first one has to do with the conduct of the audit. Did the city staff provide you with all the information you requested in a timely manner?
Yes, I mean, we worked through, obviously, the audit process is a long process. We go through and perform planning in January. It takes the, the city a few months to close their records, and we're onsite for several weeks. So yes, over the course of the audit, just so you know, auditing standards would require, if we had any difficulties during the audit with management, that, that is one of those topics that would be required to be communicated to you. There were, there were no difficulties in getting information or working with management. And you'll see that, it really stays silent to that in the letter, to be honest, because there were no difficulties encountered.
I appreciate hearing that, Kristen. I think that's important for, for everybody. The second point is to just kind of highlight that this is a clean opinion, correct?
Correct. So as I mentioned, the clean opinion means that the financials are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP as required, with no material misstatements identified.
Thank you. Last question is, and I believe you were involved in the 2018 audit, which is the first audit that RSM did. What improvements, if any, has the city made in financial reporting since 2018?
Well, I probably piggyback off the, what I noted earlier. You know, again, we, the purpose of the audit is to give an opinion on the financial statements. That is, that is the purpose of a financial statement audit. And in each year, in those three years, the city has received a clean opinion. But what I did mention earlier were, again, while we don't give an opinion on internal controls, we do have that responsibility, that if we become aware of material weaknesses and significant deficiencies, that those are reported to you. And as I noted, when you compare the, the one material weakness being reported this year compared to the number reported in 2018 and 2019, you know, again, I guess that, I would describe that as a measure that you could follow as far as improvements made in management's processes.
Are there any other improvements you could point to?
Yeah, you know, I guess another suggestion I would have, well, I know you don't have the 2018 documents in front of you. One of the things that tied to the, the deficiency is, again, that was number of audit adjustments. And I think as each of those three years has gone by, if you, you're, you're provided with a list of all of those. If you were to compare those two listings, I'm, I'm pretty confident the, the number, while they were still material this year, there's just that the quantity of items coming up during the audit has continued to decrease each of those three years. I'm, I'm happy to let Jeremy speak more to that when he, when he picks up the presentation, but I think that's what you'll find in those documents going back to the last few years.
Thank you very much, Kristen.
Any other questions this time? So I think maybe we're not, Jeremy, ready to carry on?
Jeremy Wilmeth, Finance Director, thank you very much, Kristen. This going here again, okay. So if you're like me, you have this big document in front of you, and you're like, great, what does it mean? So what I wanted to do is try to come up with just a handful of slides to help the public get an understanding for just, you know, what is our fiscal condition? You know, we have a clean audit, the financial reports have, have been presented, but, but what does it mean? And so the first thing that I would point to is unrestricted net position. And net position is a fancy accounting term that basically means the difference between assets and liabilities. Once you have that net position, then there's classifications of net positions, such as what you've invested in assets and what's been restricted for other purposes, such as debt or capital projects that have been funded but not yet finished. So when you boil all of those things down, then you have what's considered unrestricted net position. And these would really be the, the amount of government resources that are available for any activity, either within the governmental type of service or the business type of service. So you'll see that on the governmental side, we had negative unrestricted net position in 2016, and we have it again in 2020. I would call this a paper negative, rather than like a true cause for concern. One of the things governments are required to do is report the ongoing liability for pension and other post-employment benefits. And so as those numbers increase, it's not a, what we would consider a traditional drain on resources. Those are budgeted and paid for annually, but this is that ongoing residual balance to, to just show what the outstanding liability is for the government. And so it's, it's not uncommon to have years where the, the overall net position for the governmental unit is negative. On the business type activity, we have essentially the same thing. These are the combined unrestricted net assets for the water fund, the solid waste fund, the parking fund, and the golf course at this time. And you see, there's really not a lot of change from 19 to 20. But one of the things that I think might help the public is, you know, what are those things that could cause net position to either increase or decrease? And so just tried to give you not an exhaustive list, but just a list of a few things that traditionally you would see. If expenses were greater than revenue on a, on a GAAP basis, government generally accepted accounting principles basis, then those are reasons why net position would decrease over time. As is the case for our city, it's increases in pension liabilities. But there'd also be increases in bonds payable with no offsetting assets. This could occur if the city were to issue long-term debt, but not for a capital project for a different reason. We would have that debt, but we wouldn't have an offsetting asset to count against it, and that could cause a negative net position. Other things that cause negative net position would be things such as depreciation or or expenses exceeding revenues, as I mentioned earlier. And then those things that you would generally see increasing net position would obviously be revenues over expenses, capital outlay funded by grants, which Kristen mentioned earlier. We had received $12 million of capital fund, or not capital fund, excuse me, grant funding, of which the lion's share of that is capital, which would help, because then you would have an asset with no outstanding debt tied to it. So other things would be surplus revenues or unspent reserves that it could be used to pay down liabilities in future years. So looking just at governmental funds, this is the history of the available fund balance, which would, it's slightly different than net position, but it, the formula is essentially the same that you're looking at. After all has been said and done, what does the fund have right now collectively? And you see, we've seen fairly significant growth in the availability of fund balance over the last several years. These are predominantly due to the issuance of long-term debt, as I mentioned earlier, and then those capital projects taking multiple years to finish. So we would get the cash on the front end, and then years later, as the project is being finalized, and that cash gets spent down. And that's really what you're seeing in the reduction of fund balance from 19 to 20, the significant capital outlay that was invested in the police facility. So looking at page 16 of the annual financial report, this is comparing all cash available to the government at $167.6 million. Current liabilities would be anything the government owes in less than one year at $89.4 million, showing that our current cash covers our current liabilities by 87.3%. So this is more of what I would consider a benchmark. It, it's just providing assurances that the city has adequate cash to cover its current obligations. And then looking historically, here would be the cash and investments for 16 through 20, the fiscal years, and then the liabilities. You'll note a rather large increase in liabilities from 19 to 20, and this is really the temporary note that was issued for the police facility. It's showing in our 2020 financial position as an obligation due in one year. Of course, we know that in 2021, we turned this into long-term debt. So it would no longer be considered a current liability, but is a long-term liability. And looking just at the governmental funds, comparing revenues to expenditures, you'll notice the peaks in 17 and 19, and the footnote at the bottom highlighting the large amounts of debt that was issued that year. So those are capital funds that are creating those peaks. And this next slide is showing several components to the property tax. First, you'll note the large blue box is assessed valuation. And assessed valuation grew 6% in 2017, and then grew 5% both in 18 and 19, and 4% in 2020. And as you know, the current assessed valuation projection is 2.47%. So we're really seeing assessed valuation over time, starting to smooth out, and not have the large increases that we've seen in prior years. So looking just at the general fund, the left side of this chart is essentially that same cash analysis, showing that our current cash is 22.8 million. Expenses in the, in the fiscal year 2020 was just over 77 million. And so if you take that and divide it by 365, then we essentially have 3.56 months of expenses cash on hand. The other side of that is showing revenue and expenses for the entire year. And our revenues were 75.09 million, our expenses were 77, pardon me, our expenses were 77.0, or 77.1 million, excuse me. So we actually had a loss in 2020 of just over 1.9 million. I think a lot of people can understand that with the shutdowns that we experienced throughout 2020, our sales taxes, our liquor taxes, various taxes, all experienced declines. And so that attributes for the 2.64% loss. So looking at the general fund over the last five years, the green line at the top is revenue. The blue bar is unassigned fund balance, and the red bar is cash. And one thing you'll note is that cash was increasing fairly consistently in 16, 17, 18, and 19. And then we saw that reduction in cash in 20 due to the pandemic. You'll also note that fund balance has been staying around that $25 million figure. And the footnote at the bottom is just a reminder that the city's fund balance policy requires 90 days of cash, which if you took the expenditures from the previous slide, divided by 365, multiplied by 90, that would equal 19.26 million, which would leave actual cash available for operations of 3.6 million in the general fund. And so this next slide is just looking at the revenues to the general fund over the last five years by category. As you can see, taxes are the lion's share of the general fund's revenue. The taxes, which would be property taxes, sales taxes, and franchise fees, comprise 77% of all general fund revenue. Taxes grew by 7% from 2017, 4% in 2018, 3% in 2019, and less than 1% in 2020. This next slide is looking at the expenditures in the general fund. As you can see, public safety is the largest expenditure in the general fund. Public safety comprises 63% of all general fund investment. And it, it grew by 18% in 2017, but I really believe that was a shift. I believe there were some positions that were classified in the city manager's office that were moved to the police department. And that's why you see general government dropping and public safety increasing from 2016 to 2017. But if you look at just 2018, there was 6% growth. In 2019, there was 5% growth, and in 2020, there was 8% growth. And so now, looking at the water sewer fund, another one of our major funds, you can see that we have 23.3 million in cash. The expenses in 2020 were just over 49 million. So again, if you take those expenses, divide by 365, put that toward the cash, we have 5.71 months of cash available. Looking at the revenues and the expenses, again, the, the city basically broke even. We had a net gain of about $569,000 of revenue over expenses. Apologize. Apologize. So looking at a similar chart to the general fund, but for the water and sewer fund, you can see the revenue is the gray line at the top. Cash available for operations is the orange line, and then the unrestricted net position is the blue line. And we've been seeing consistent growth in the unrestricted net position, which is really what the Moody's investment and others are really interested in in terms of debt. So by continuing to increase our unrestricted net position, we better our fiscal outlook for the rating agencies, which helps lower our overall borrowing cost. However, if you take the cash that's currently available, the twenty-three point three, and you back out the fund balance policy of two hundred and fifty days, which is twenty-one point four nine million, that really just leaves cash available for operations of one point eight million to stay within our policy. And the last slide I have tonight is just looking at debt overall. The general obligation debt is predominantly funded by the mill levy. There is a little bit of general obligation debt that's funded by the water rates and solid waste, but the lion's share of it is the mill levy. The temporary notes are also funded by the mill levy, and then the revenue bonds are solely funded by water and sewer rates. And so you can see that over the last number of years, we've been slowly lowering our debt portfolio primarily because we knew that the police facility was coming. And as you know, in 2021, and in 2022, excuse me, we'll be converting both of those temporary notes into a long-term general obligation debt, which will obviously then increase the general obligation overall debt for the city. On the revenue bond side, we have some significant water and wastewater projects that we're also starting to pay off old debt for to make room within our current rate structure to help cover those expenses as well. So those are all of the slides I provided or prepared for this evening. I hope that provides a little bit of background into where the city sat at twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty. A lot of this was covered in the budget presentation we made a few weeks ago, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Are there questions for Jeremy?
Jeremy, did you explain the water and sewer fund? Did you explain why you see that?
I'm sorry, you're maybe it's my machine, but I'm not hearing you very well. Is this the slide you were talking about?
Yeah, that's the slide. Can you explain that fund balance policy that requires two?
Sure. Jeremy Wilmot, Finance Director. The water and wastewater fund would be what we would consider to be a volatile fund because it is so much dependent upon weather and use. And so it is prudent in utility, long-term planning, to have rainy day funds to help weather those storms. There's also a component of the two hundred and fifty days that is there for debt reserve isn't the right term, but essentially it's what Moody's likes to see, strong utilities that aren't at risk for defaulting on their debt, having the ability to have strong balances. And so as we discussed the fund balance policy earlier this year, fifty days was a an agreement that we had with Rafftilis in conjunction with our municipal finance advisor to ensure that we had an adequate cash reserve that would satisfy the bondholders and the rating agencies as they continue to look at our current debt and future debt issuances.
Jeremy, could you talk a little bit about the difference between a bond rate for the general obligation debt and the revenue bonds?
In terms of
What the ratings are?
Sure. Jeremy Wilmot, Finance Director. I don't have those ratings off the top of my head. I apologize. But our two ratings are fairly similar. The general obligation rating is predominantly based on the fact that we're a strong town, college community with a wide tax base. Those are all things that Moody's considers to be in our favor. Really, the only downside that the city of Lawrence has in the eyes of the investment community is something that we just have no control over, and that's that we're in the Midwest, and the Midwest is seen as a smaller market. On the revenue side, they're really concerned about how much revenue we're generating in excess of expenditures so that that margin in our in our actual debt issuances, we guarantee a one point two percent coverage, meaning after all of our operating expenses have been paid, we have a hundred and twenty percent of what we owe in debt service for that fiscal year in revenue. And so that's one of the key drivers to the revenue model, or the rate model, excuse me, and the need to increase rates year over year is to ensure that we can keep the city's ability to borrow long-term at the lowest cost possible.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Okay, well, thank you, Jeremy, and I would also like to thank RSM. Maybe I would clarify, that was three years with them. So now our policy, if I recall, is that we rotate our auditors to keep fresh eyes on it, which is very wise. And so alas, we may not see Kristin again. So thank you very much for helping us load these many years.
I guess, you know, I'd like to clarify if there are plans to rotate or if we're going to continue with RSM for another year or two or so.
Jeremy Wilmot, Finance Director. Commissioner Shipley, you are correct that the original RFP was for three years, but there were some options to renew. And so given the difficulties that the finance department had in 2018 and in 2019, we really feel like to get a really good understanding of our financial position, changing auditors now would essentially be starting over. So we are going to recommend that we keep RSM at least through the 2021, if not 2022, but that would be the last year, and then we would absolutely go back out with another RFP in 2022 at the latest.
Thank you, Jeremy. I think we might need to open this up for public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on thought?
Hi, Phil Engelhardt, and I, the slide that's up there, I believe, yeah, that's the one that relates to this material. I abstracted this from the tenure report, and I appreciate the efforts that were put together, particularly the historical efforts. And maybe, you know, my abstract and what I've done isn't, you know, it's certainly not sophisticated, and maybe it's not even close enough to be incorrect to be or be to be valid. But when I look at the the total expenses and put them on a per cap basis, as shown, you know, in the report, I see what appears in this graphic here. And what I take away from it, what I want the commission to consider is, in particular, you know, the increases in total expenses and the rate of increases so that when decisions are made moving forward, that we recognize that we appear to have, you know, increasing total expenses, both on the general government side and on the business enterprise side, that exceed inflation, which has all sorts of implications for the kind of decisions that you all are going to be making on capital budgets, you know, and so forth, all kinds of implications with respect to the CIP. And I hope that you'll take those kind of things into account as you make those decisions.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience? Sherri, do we see anybody on Zoom that's interested in speaking on this item?
Sorry, just
If there's anyone on Zoom who would like to provide public comment on this item, please use the raise hand function, or you can turn on your video and raise your hand. There's no comment, Vice Mayor. Thank you very much. Any further comments or discussion with commissioners? And I believe we're just receiving this, so we don't need to vote on that. Good. Thank you again to everyone who worked on that. It's greatly appreciated. Let's move on to number two, item number two, discuss the right-of-way management program and direct staff as appropriate.
Share my screen. So good evening, Vice Mayor Shipley and Commissioners. My name is Enrico Viegas, and I'm the Right-of-Way Program Administrator with the Municipal Services and Operations Department. And I did want to note that I appreciated the proclamation for the eight-one-one. It's just kind of good timing that that proclamation was also the same day as the presentation. So kind of going on with the agenda. Excuse me. So the agenda will be broken into two parts. So the first part is to provide information that was requested from the commission at various commission meetings in the past. And then to also discuss some proposed changes to the city code, in particular, Chapter sixteen, Articles eight, nine, and the right-of-way administrative regulations that govern the right-of-way. And so with that, I will formally ask at at least two points in the presentation after Part One is concluded, to ask if there are any questions, if you'd like to kind of engage in dialogue or wait until Part Two. Part Two, there's only two slides, but the commission is also free to ask questions at any point, but I just wanted to throw that out there. As part of that, there's no action that would be expected tonight, other than to really direct staff as as appropriate. So I'll move to the gist of the meeting. So the outline for Part One, these were some of the in those past meetings, the commission wanted to know more about the right-of-way licensing agreement requirements. And there was a desire by the commission to look at potential exemptions, possibly potential charges for them. There was statements made on exempting residential private landowners from requiring right-of-way permits, or at least trying to alleviate some burden in some capacity. And then right-of-way program charges, and there was an emphasis on wanting to learn more about the fines. I will state upfront that the the potential charges for the licensing agreement is a little tricky, and that will be something that we need a little bit more commission guidance on, or just to make sure we're on the right track and really have a good discussion on that. And the exemptions for the residential landowners, that will be discussed more in Part Two. So the general purpose of the licensing agreement, as it's practiced today, is to satisfy the city code. And it also kind of functions as a formal acknowledgement between the property owner and the city, that the city will not generally compensate for any damages to those facilities that would be installed in right-of-way, or if those facilities needed to be relocated or removed for whatever reason, that the city would not pay for that. And then also, that agreement gets filed with the Douglas County Register of Deeds with that specific property. That way, future homeowners are made aware of that agreement, or at least be aware. And so, and kind of going back to looking at the potential exemptions, city staff was able to come up with a list of things that we thought would be most appropriate that could fall under those potential exemptions. This list was shared with numerous contractors, builders, and other professional organizations like the Lawrence Home Builders Association. And there was a general consensus that they felt that this was a good list. And so I won't be reading everything here, but I can always reference back to this slide if you would like. While the, there would be an exemption to the right-of-way agreement requirement. Staff feels that it would still be important to have a right-of-way permit. And there would be certain, unless certain conditions are met, and that would be more in the Part Two of this. But very generally, sorry, I'll make it bigger. Very generally, this is kind of what we're what staff is proposing. So getting into the charges for the licensing agreement, staff has come up with at least two options, or like two lenses by which those could be viewed. So one would be to assess an annual fee or other charge for commercial and industrial applicants. And city code and right-of-way administrative regulations are written that we would alleviate that annual fee on residential owners. And again, with, but also comply with some affordable housing initiatives. So there'd be the annual fee approach, or assess a flat one-time fee that would be uniform across the board, again, for the commercial and industrial applicants. The one thing to note is that we don't have what that proposed fee would be. There would still be some analysis and vetting internally on that, but this is of these proposing conceptually what we're thinking. And obviously, we're open to commissioner suggestions on that. And then, in addition, staff does not recommend an outright exemption of certain types of work from the requirements of the right-of-way permit. So some justifications that the current status of the program, we would like to be maintained as competitively neutral, meaning that everyone would be held to the same standards, you know, having good traffic control in place, that the general safety measures are being met, and also the accountability factor. So I, moving on to charges, the right-of-way program does have a fairly robust fee to fine schedule. So it starts generally with the permit fee, and then depending on the scope and complexity of the permit request, additional fees could be applied, such as an inspections fee, or if it's primarily suited in downtown, then there would be a parking reservation fee. And then in terms of fines, our administrative regulations, you know, allow for either a fifty-dollar up to a two hundred and fifty-dollar fine for noncompliance. That could be for failing to have a right-of-way permit, or working with improper traffic control or no traffic control, something like that. And then fines, some of the bigger ones could be either a thousand to twenty-five hundred for a municipal And then fines, some of the bigger ones could be either $1,000 to $2,500 for a municipal offense. A municipal offense could be working without a right-of-way permit. And that that's kind of more governed in code. And then finally, there's the miscellaneous. The miscellaneous section of this is more if in the event that there was a failure on the contractor to restore the right-of-way in as good of condition or better, or if if the within their warranty inspection process of the permit, if the contractor had to remove sidewalk, and then that sidewalk failed within that one-year period, and we wanted to pursue the contractor to repair that, and they chose not to. This is where that administrative overhead fee would be, where it'd be the cost of the permit plus 25%. And then the city would just pay a contractor to fix that portion of whatever whatever it was that needed to be repaired. So, there's that. And I this is the end of Part One. So, if the Commission has any questions, or if they would like for me to proceed, Part Two is only two slides. So, it's really up to the Commission.
Anyone? Go ahead.
So, some of the proposed changes, again, these proposed changes were shared with, you know, the builders, contractors, utility companies, et cetera. So, kind of in a brevity and form, one proposed change would be that new residential construction and/or residential remodels would be exempt from the right-of-way permitting requirements, if and only if there is an active invalid building permit. We do staff does see that there is some efficiency gain in doing that, and also kind of supporting some of those affordable housing initiatives. Number two, work that only affects pedestrian pedestrian traffic will not be required to submit separate traffic control permits, or separate permits, sorry. Number three, roll-off dumpsters will not be required to have a right-of-way permit outside of the downtown area. Number four, the licensing agreement exceptions, which was covered in Part One. And then one accidental omission, there should be a number five on here. The number five would be that city crews would not there wouldn't be the need for city crews to apply for a Class Three permit, just a traffic control permit. Some of the logic there is that for our internal lucidity asset management system, that's where the crews generate those work orders, that's already being tracked, kind of like it would be our right-of-way system. So, it's kind of a duplicated effort, but that's where some of that, some of the logic is coming from there. And so, the next slide is kind of a a matrix to help explain what what staff is looking at in terms of the residential construction. So, as it currently stands, all of the activities here, the new residential construction, the building remodel, et cetera. Currently, where applicable, a right-of-way permit may be required. So, staff is proposing that for any new residential construction, whether infill or greenfield, whatever, would not would not be required to have a right-of-way permit. And it and all that work could be covered under the building permit, in particular, utility tie-ins, driveways, irrigation systems. A building remodel exclusive to residential would function the same. A building addition would not. So, think a if a homeowner is building a deck in their backyard, and it really doesn't have anything to do with the right-of-way, or if they're extending a patio, or enclosing their patio, or whatever, that staff did feel that there could be a potential for abuse in trying to do multiple things with that one permit. And then any non-residential construction would not be covered under this. So, with that, kind of short short presentation, but I'll stand for questions. Commissioner Larson, this is Enrico MSO. I can't hear you very well. I apologize for that. Okay, yes, that would be correct. Enrico Viegas, Program Administrator.
So, has has Enrico has any considerations for possible looking at how the landscapers can be licensed through our through our licensing program? Which is on Class Four license? The right-of-way process?
What? This is Enrico Viegas, Program Administrator. Commissioner Larson, was the question of being able to expand the Class Four permit to be included with the landscapers? I I'm sorry, it's just it feels like you're really far away.
So, my question was whether or is any consideration?
Could there be any consideration for including landscapers as part of the Class Four licensing companies? And then that would essentially hold them accountable, because that was one of the one of the things that you wanted, was be able to hold somebody accountable for issues. So, if they were licensed in this in the city of Lawrence, then that would hold them accountable for the quality of their work. And so, my my question is, is 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 that something that could be considered versus having to get a right-of-way permit for things such as in the right-of-way doing sprinkler systems or any landscaping within the right-of-way?
Okay, I I can hear you now. Thank you. Enrico Viegas, Program Administrator. So, it we do have a a Class Four permit that's considered like a general maintenance permit, more like a blanket permit that a a contractor could apply for. And so, that would cover any of the maintenance activities that they would perform throughout the year. So, if, for example, a a landscaping company needed to maintain a sprinkler system, whether it's replacing heads, or winterizing it, or maintaining, you know, a retaining wall, or repointing some natural stone, whatever the case may be, we did offer that to to the contractors, that that would be available to them to do those maintenance activities without the need of applying for multiple separate permits. So, it'd just be one that would cover that maintenance work.
So, landscapers can apply for that? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, they could, yeah.
And that would that eliminate the need to get a right-of-way permit for installation of of equipment within the right-of-way?
It would only eliminate the need for applying for a separate permit for something that's already existing. But if they needed to apply for a new install, whatever that new install would be, then they would just apply for a right-of-way permit for that. But then, as soon as that is installed, then if they ever needed to go back and perform maintenance, that's not Class Four would come in, so they wouldn't need to apply for multiple permits.
So, in order to do maintenance on that equipment, would they have to be licensed under the Class Four?
They would not.
Thank you. Any other questions? That's all our questions. Let's do some public comment. I think there's some people who are anxious to speak with us tonight.
Good evening. My name is Bobby Florrie, and I'm with the Lawrence Home Builders Association. I'd like to start by thanking Enrico Viegas for making so many opportunities available to us to give input and to understand what the proposal is from MSO. We support staff's recommendation to exempt single-family duplex remodels from right-of-way permitting if there is an active permit. This is a great example of reviewing the existing regulations to see if we can reduce costs in regulation without compromising safety or the intent of the regulations. So, we're very pleased that this is happening. This is this is great coordination between Planning and Development Services and MSO. So, we appreciate the effort and the work of staff to put this together. The only additional suggestion that we would have, in addition to encouraging you to move forward with this recommendation, is to add landscaping to the exemption for the right-of-way permit for the installation of of what sprinklers and also for plantings in the right-of-way. And that's something that is, there are some landscapers here that will probably go into more detail about that, but we we believe that the intent is that they would not compromise the safety, and that would be another opportunity to reduce the cost to the homeowner. So, with that, I would ask you to please move forward with this recommendation.
My name is Frank Mail. I'm with Lawrence Landscape, and forgive me because I'm reading my own notes, so it'll be a struggle. First of all, I wanted to to thank Enrico for reaching out to the Green Industry Professionals and Lawrence Lawrence Home Builders Association and other stakeholders concerning the right-of-way permit issue. He has done more outreach in the last four months than I've seen in 20 years of interacting with city government. So, for that, he's to be commended, and it's appreciated. And so, and we're also appreciative of being exempted from the licensing agreement for the right-of-way permits on residential projects that are in an active building permit. Now, this is just dealing with a licensing agreement is having the homeowner sign a document, and then having it come to the City Commission, and then signed by the notarized, and then signed by the the city manager, which is onerous, and so, having that exempted when there is a active permit is appreciated appreciated and saves a lot of headaches for all concerned. Through the Zoom meetings with staff and phone conversations with Enrico, the question was asked, what problems are being solved by having green industry contractors pull a Class Three right-of-way permit? It really boiled down to temporary traffic control and having to do with sidewalks and having enforcement capabilities. As you saw in the presentation, penalties set forth in the right-of-way program, fines are a minimum of $1,000, and that's could be daily. So, it seems excessive. I I learned in the Enrico's presentation that there's a lesser offense fine, but I didn't know that in advance. As an alternative, I reached out to Lawrence Police Department and was able to visit with Lieutenant Myron Brady, who mentioned that there are already statutes available to the Lawrence Police Department regarding safe travel on sidewalks. These are handled on a complaint basis, and that and I believe that that solves Enrico's concerns about if you think realistically, think of people having an issue on the sidewalk, are they going to call the city? Are they going to call the police department? And I I think that's going to be the answer. They'll call the police department saying, hey, you know, something isn't quite right. And so, I think there's enforcement mechanism already in place. And Lieutenant Myron Brady also said that, you know, common sense prevails and de-escalation.
I'm sorry, your time. Could you finish your thought?
You bet. So, I think that solves Enrico's major concern. My proposal is that the green industry be exempted from the right-of-way permits for all single-family duplex townhomes and residential dwellings. It has not been shown that the green industry contractors are causing problems. It seems that the solution is a search of a problem. Forcing these regulations, as written once again, raises the cost of living in Lawrence, increases red tape, and increases the workload of city staff for no appreciable results. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Frank.
Hi, I'm Chris Berger. Just to kind of set the table a little bit, this began a couple of years ago when fiber companies were talking about coming to town and frankly, just pushing their will upon the city with regard to right-of-way, which is generally set aside for utilities. So, this was put forward, and everyone viewed it in the context of the utility coming through, specifically fiber. And assurances were given that, you know, no one, no one's home would be affected, as well as we note that there would be no full-time employees hired as a result of this. That's in the memo, and that was what was approved. Everyone who owns a home, they own their land to the road, and actually, to the middle of the road, and fee simple, meaning they own it entirely. But the city has taken a right-of-way on it, so that they have an easement that allows them to put a road or similar apartments. Having that fee simple interest means property owners are allowed to use that land for any purpose that they want that doesn't interfere with the road. The way this is being implemented now is, in effect, taking that control away from property owners. Those property owners are now subject to the permission of the city to do things like plant shrubs, put in the driveway, irrigation systems, a variety of improvements that should affect the positive net value of their homes. An onerous process has been put in place, admittedly perhaps intentional, so that actions of Google Fiber and the like would have been a little more difficult, but it's being implemented against private citizens. And the fines are excessive, $2,000 per violation per day. So, if I plant 10 shrubs, and I don't have a permit, that's 10 violations each day.
Form a lien judgment against me, $20,000 a day. Ridiculous. You know, under the context of fiber, I can kind of get it. With residences, that's terrible, not to mention increasing the cost to everyone. So, I love the suggestions that are being made. I think that the right approach to fix the situation. I would also ask that you go ahead and make it very clear that there shall be no fines, no penalties against residential properties, period, and expressly stating that there shall be no lien or no encumbrance placed upon any of those residences as a result of any alleged violation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this item? Or anyone on Zoom who's who would like to speak for three minutes? Is there anyone participating via Zoom that would like to provide comment on this item? There's no more public comment, Vice Mayor. Thank you very much. Let's bring it back to the Commission.
Yeah, I was wondering if staff could speak to some of the issues that were brought up by the public speakers, especially the fine part, as to why the fines are what they are, and whether or not that is is a need.
This is Enrico Viegas, Program Administrator. So, one thing that in in speaking with our building officials, So, one thing that in speaking with our building officials, when it came in particular to landscaping, is that more often than not, those were getting installed after the CO of the building. So, it's no longer an active building permit. In addition, there are, would be some safeguards to having the right-of-way permits still in place, such as if you're at an intersection, you'd want to be assured that the plantings or vegetation would not exceed three feet in height to create some sight distance issues. So, that was at least some of the logic in talking about landscaping. And then some of the fines, I want to pull it up here. So, excuse me, I'm grabbing the slide. I'm going to reshare my screen just so I can look at the same thing. So, in practice, how these are being applied to date, we have not pursued the municipal offense option that is kind of governed in codes. We've pursued more of what is offered in the administrative regulations. Considering that the right-of-way program is still new, as denoted by some of the speakers, verbal warnings have been effective. And if they haven't, either, you know, stopping work or issuing some of these smaller fines have also been productive in kind of curbing that non-conforming behavior. But it should be noted that the fines that are offered in the right-of-way program are steeper than other fines offered. You know, say for our building officials, for example, theirs aren't as steep. So, I did want to throw that out there. So, I believe those were some of the kind of the major points that were brought out from the speakers. So, if there are any more questions from the Commission, I'll stop sharing my screen.
I guess, given that information, it does concern me that they're so high for property owners and residential property owners. It seems excessive, especially Enrico, when you're saying that they are higher than some other fines that we have for development community. So, I would be interested in having staff take a, retake a look at that.
Anyone else? I have a question, Enrico. My recollection in my younger days was that everyone commonly understood that if you were fool enough to build something in the city right-of-way and it got torn up under the, just the course of business, curbs or whatever, that the city wasn't responsible for it. And I'm not aware that that wasn't working. Was there litigation? What led to this level of severity with residential owners?
So, some of that, I'll have to ask some of my department management to kind of weigh in on. But it was shared with me that there was at least a practice historically that the city was paying for damage to irrigation systems or whatever the case may be throughout the course of like a city project. So, I don't know all of the details, but just very generally, that's what I know.
Thank you for that. So, I do realize that there's just a very narrow area where it seems like landscapers wouldn't be able to carry on kind of in that tradition. And I was, I'm a little interested in, you said that city crews won't need a Class III permit. Can you help me reconcile that with the need for other people to have a Class IV or a Class III permit?
Yes. So, one, we have an internal kind of asset management system right now. It's called Lucity. So, Lucity is where our internal crews would generate work orders to make repairs, whether water lines, sanitary sewer, street, curb, whatever. So, a lot of that, what the function, the functionality of the right-of-way permit is really to track those things just for external. But internal, since we have our own tracking system, Lucity, the one thing that would, is still really beneficial for everyone is what their traffic control plan is. So, that traffic control plan is reviewed and analyzed for how does that affect transit? How does that affect emergency services, et cetera? So, it is almost like a duplicated effort by having stuff live in Lucity and then also having stuff live in our right-of-way permitting system. So, it was more of a, just a general efficiency cleanup.
Any other comments?
No, I would like to gauge the interest by the Commission to have staff relook at this fining system that they put together as to whether or not it could be modified to be a little bit more what I would think reasonable.
Yeah, it's interesting that, I believe you said it's considerably more than in another department or, I'm sorry, did you say in planning? Wouldn't we want it to be kind of consistent? Can you give some examples of some of those other fees?
Yes. So, say, I'll use the lane use fee. If an applicant applies for a right-of-way permit and in the right-of-way permit, they denote that they need to cut the street on a collector or an arterial street. That in order to encourage the, in order to encourage the contractor to pull their traffic control quicker or finish the job sooner, the lane use fee is applied to those collector or arterial streets that it carries on a footage basis of how, you know, big the cut is, how long the traffic control is for that work zone. So, then those fees will be applied for a lane use, an inspection fee, et cetera. And then for the parking reservation fee, if someone were to request a reservation of meters in downtown, they would pay for the permit fee, a parking setup fee, which is just like a reservation sign that says these signs or these meters are reserved. And then there's a per day charge for those meters, again, to encourage faster turnover in the downtown parking. So, hopefully that helps with those fees. I can get to a little more detail if you would like.
I guess I'm hearing the attention particularly around the lane closure fee is to discourage that from taking very long or being excessive. This seems more like a, just an avoidance of engaging in this without permission because those fees are somewhat exorbitant. And applying that to residential seems one way and applying that to commercial seems a different way if they're professionally engaging in that right-of-way versus, you know, a neighbor planting a shrub without being aware of the implications of that. Does that make sense? Like, I'm not as concerned about those fees if they should know better and they're engaging in that behavior versus if they don't.
Commissioner Enrico Viegas, Program Administrator. So, those fees really only apply, like the lane use fee wouldn't be applied to like a residential street where there'd be like a lower volume of traffic, which is where, like you're, they're more likely that residents are living. It would only be applied to those heavier usage streets because we have seen in the past that without those fees, that they would just have the lane closed for however long without actually doing any work. So, in order to incentivize that turnover, we found that the lane use fees and the inspection fee, applying those, has captured their attention at kind of moving quicker because the longer that traffic control is up, the longer it's disrupting everyone else. So, at least some justification for those fees.
What were the foundations for the fees in this?
So, the foundation for the fees for those, let me pull that up. I'll share my screen again. So, here's our schedule of right-of-way fees. So, the pavement degradation fee, kind of the matrix here, is really what the cost of, what it would cost for like the city to put that back. So, we, in using the PCI and then providing like a range, this is roughly how much it would cost, you know, to restore that if the contractor didn't, for example. And the inspection fee was the cost of the city employee with full benefits, a truck, et cetera, with, I think, a one and a half multiplier to come up with this fee in terms of like how many inspections that, you know, staff member would do because it is factoring in, you know, the warranty inspection. So, one year after the work, in order to close out the permit to make sure everything was restored properly and it handled, you know, the freeze saw of everything. And then the lane use fees, kind of similar to the logic above. And then the parking fee, I'm not as familiar with the parking fee. Some of that had come from parking staff. So, that is justification for these fees, at least some history of where they came from.
I appreciate that, Enrico. I think that my focus, actually, I appreciate you going over that even though I didn't ask my question correctly. I'm talking more about the fines. So, the $50 to $250 for non-compliance and the municipal offense fines. Can you talk about the intent around those? I see Melinda jumped on, so I don't know if she wants to add to that.
Melinda Harker, Assistant Director of Municipal Services and Operations. I was going to speak to those fees, the $50 to $250. That's based on a section in our regulations that says they're an additional fee for found working without the proper right-of-way control permit shall be the $250 or an amount equal to the total right-of-way permit, whichever's lower. So, since the permit starts at $50 and can go up from there, if you're found working without one, you'll have to get your permit and you'll also get a charge anywhere from $50 to $250. On top of that is a penalty for not getting it in advance of the work you're doing. So, those are the fees and how they're structured.
Thanks, Melinda. Can you talk too about the municipal offense fees?
I may need assistance from legal on this. Oh, sorry. Melinda Harker, Assistant Director, Municipal Services and Operations. In our regulations, it just says that, let me find the exact section so I can read it. There is a section that says persons or business entity shall also be subject to whatever penalty is available under the city code, including but not limited to criminal prosecution. So, I think the municipal offense and those fines are set by city code. If it went that route, we of course would first be applying the $50 to $250. It's more for those repeat offenders. If we cannot get compliance with regulations, that there's something else, some other route to go there. And legal would probably be best to answer any questions regarding that.
Thanks. Is there, and I think I heard Enrico say, you know, there have been instances in which a warning has been sufficient. When you go out and have those conversations, are you weighing the should-have-known and willfully disregarded piece of that?
What staff is weighing, this is Enrico Viegas, Program Administrator. What staff would be weighing in those instances is say if it was a contractor from out of town that didn't know, that there could be possibility that they weren't aware of our regulations, that a verbal warning would be issued. That doesn't mean that if they're obstructing the sidewalk that we would allow that. You know, it's still requests that the traffic control need to be installed, but whether a fine would be issued in that particular case. If it does appear that they genuinely did not know, then we would not apply that.
Thanks, Enrico.
I had a question from Melinda. This is Lisa. So, you had indicated that that municipal fine was probably reserved more for the habitual offender? Is that what you said? Is that how it's written up in the ordinance or the policy, whatever it is?
So, I'll, Commissioner Larson, I'll hop in on that. So, in terms of the application, it allows for that. So, if, say for instance, if a right-of-way permit was not procured, you could levy the $50 fine in addition to seeking other municipal, seeking that as a municipal offense. But again, since the regulations are still relatively new, it's really been one and a half years of doing this. We want to make sure that we give everyone an opportunity to be able to comply. Now, in terms of going back to Commissioner Nanda's question of why they were so high, it, I don't have an answer for why they're 1,000 or 2,500. But in asking, you know, staff on where that had come from, there wasn't, I don't have the best answer other than what was told to me was that's just what the Commission wanted at that time.
I think that kind of supports what I'm trying to say about we need to relook at these fine system because, Enrico, you just indicated we don't have a real solid reason as to why we decided to charge these dollar amounts. And if, and then I go back to the municipal fines, if it is to target habitual offenders, then that should be stated as such in the actual fine system, some sort of whatever the guidelines are or whatever the system is.
Melinda Harker, Assistant Director of MSO. I do know that the fee structure through the right-of-way regulations, when those were drafted back in 2019, there's a lot of thought that went into those. As far as the municipal offense and addressing when it can and cannot be used, it's likely that is listed in the city code. And again, I'm not sure if we've ever applied that, but it is in the city code, not in the regulations for right-of-way specifically.
That would be good to know what that specifically says.
I would tend to agree. Maybe just take a little more time and maybe legal. If there's some more uniformity or clarity we could get.
I'd ask if other Commissioners are interested in that, having a relook at the fine system.
I see consensus on that. Are there any other items that Commissioners specifically wanted to speak to on this? Or was there specific questions that Enrico needed us to answer for him this evening? Regarding the assessing the fees annually or flat fee? The assessing the fees annually or flat fee, for example? Thank you, Commissioner. Enrico, do you need more from us? What can we give you for that?
Commissioners, Enrico Viegas, Program Administrator. What would be helpful to be able to have from you all is... What would be helpful to be able to have from you all is what has been tricky for staff is in comparison to sidewalk dining where it's more of a revenue-generating item, a retaining wall or something like that isn't. So trying to come up with a system to kind of make that fair, it is a little hard. So I guess number one, would the commission be interested in doing an annual fee or just a one-time fee? Or are we still, is the commission still interested in charging for like non-revenue generating items? It's more just kind of open-ended to make sure that I capture all of your thoughts and make sure that we get, you know, some good policy from it.
Yeah, I think I would be interested in either just a one-time fee versus every year. It just seems, it seems a bit much to, especially since it's not revenue generating.
The purpose partly is for you to be aware of what is in the right-of-way for your own purposes, for the city's purposes. Is that basically accurate?
Yeah.
So, from a record-keeping perspective, does a one-time fee conveniently cover that?
Yeah, I believe so, Enrico Viegas, MSO.
Yeah, I see consensus on that. What else can we help you with?
I believe that's it, Enrico Viegas, MSO. I think I have enough information to proceed forward.
All right, thank you very much. This is simply a discussion item, so again, it was just to give staff direction. And I believe we can move on to commission items.
Can I just say one thing? I just want to thank Enrico for working on this process here with the right-of-way and the work that he's put in to engage the community on what works for them as well as meeting the needs of the city. I want to really thank you, Enrico, for doing that. And I hope you continue that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, commission items. Does anyone have any items we need to discuss?
I think that one thing that we might want to talk about either tonight or soon is, you know, I think that masking may be coming back and we may want to consider how we structure our meetings yet again in order to be nimble for that and for the folks in our homes who are not able to be vaccinated at this point. Everyone's safety, so.
I agree. I also feel bad that our city managers are not here.
Yeah, so I don't know that that's necessarily a discussion for tonight, but I think that it is something that we need to talk about and that seems to be changing swiftly. So it might be something that we need to figure out sooner than later.
I presume that's already on your radar, Brandon.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Anything else? Then that brings us to the city manager's report.
Okay, Assistant City Manager Brandon McGuire. Just briefly, we have a couple items on the manager's report. Our monthly building permit report. I'd encourage you to read through that, as I'm sure you do every month. A lot of activity with our Planning Development Services Department right now. Very interesting data for you. I want to draw your attention to a couple items on the future agenda report. We did list the multimodal transfer facility and downtown transfer improvement project for August 10th. That is actually going to be scheduled for August 17th. As you're probably aware, we are creating the August 10th agenda right now and that some of the materials and contracts needed for that presentation are not going to be ready for the 10th. So we'll stick with that August 17th date, which has been out as a public notice for quite a while. So I apologize, but that could be a little bit of a lengthy meeting for us on the 17th. And then the last thing I'd point out is the third memo, which has, I guess we're calling them frequently asked questions. I don't know how frequently they're asked, but they've at least been asked once. Questions related to the budget. And really, I think that's helpful feedback for the commissioners and the public as we work through the budget process. But more than anything, I want to draw everybody's attention to that August 31st public hearing date. And that's going to be our next big public milestone for the community to provide input and the commissioners to review the budget one more time.
Thank you very much, Brandon. And yeah, I did want to comment, but I appreciated that. Putting all the, there's multiple, we see many memos. So you put them all in one place where people can find them, and I found that very convenient and kind. So thank you to Danielle or whoever did that. That was a great idea. Let's move on to calendar items. Anything that we need to add or discuss?
City manager's report to public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I was going to not forget. Thank you. Yes, that's a public comment item. If anyone would like to speak to the items that were on the city manager's report. Anyone on Zoom who's interested in speaking on that item?
And my comment is, will the public be limited to three minutes in that discussion as well? Or is there some way, some alternative plans so that the public, and I'm speaking broadly as myself, as the public, but I'm interested in, it seems like the train is moving forward inexorably and we're not necessarily getting, until it all comes together at the package at the end, okay? Will we actually see a picture that we can really comment on? And I for one, don't think three minutes is a sufficient time for comments, quite frankly. So you've heard what I had to say about it and I'm sure you probably will not change your procedures, but a couple that I need to say.
Thank you, Phil. I appreciate your comments. And I'm sure all of us will be speaking with you pretty soon personally, so we can talk about that. I won't put that on staff necessarily as an item. But thank you again for commenting. Anyone else? Did you see in there, Sherry?
No one has indicated on Zoom that they want to speak to this.
Okay, great. Calendar, any items? All right, I think that's everything. Is there a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, very much.
I seconded.
I'm sorry. Sorry. Moved and seconded.
Good lord, is there all the candidates tonight?